And start the meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Melissa, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Muller is absent. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Beazel?
Here.
Mr. Liederman is absent and Mr. Meyer?
Here.
If we could all stand and pledge the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wow, what a great crowd tonight. This is awesome. You're welcome every time we have a meeting. No, I'm just kidding about that, actually. We'll start with entertain a motion for the minutes from the last meeting. Oh, okay.
I wasn't here either.
Okay, so it's up to you two. Move to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman? Ms. Kelly? Do I have to?
Yeah. Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Meyer?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a time for visitors' communications. Got a lot of visitors tonight. This is awesome. The first item on the agenda is pinning of the badge on Sam Burley for Chief Mike Bailey. Please do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor Haas. Sam, would you step forward? Mayor Haas, members of the Board of Council, staff, and distinguished citizens of the City of Fort Thomas, we are very proud to welcome Sam Burley to our department. Sam comes to us from the Anderson Township Fire Department and also the Orlander Fire Department. Sam's got a few years of experience on him as a firefighter current man. We're excited to have him as a part of our department. He'll make a fine addition to shift two with Captain Amon and Lieutenant Wrath. And again, we're excited that Sam's here. Did well in the testing. And again, I couldn't be more pleased to be able to pin the badge on Sam tonight. Sam will have badge number one and will have helmet number 665, radio number.
Well, welcome to Fort Thomas, yeah.
It's kind of our pleasure. Mayor, so welcome. And I think it's your floor. If you'd like to introduce any guests, it's my neighbor tonight, and I have them.
My wife Jamie is here with me and my three-month-old son Nolan and... Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And welcome to Fort Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is pinning of Shawn Donlin and Matthew Marksberry badges. Chief Mike Bailey.
Mayor and council members, thank you very much. Mr. Dell, thank you also. Obviously, they're in suits, so we won't be able to do the traditional pinning of the badge because we're still working on the uniforms for them. Something we didn't get to do today, and I'd like to do it now, is the oath of office. Shawn, Matthew are going to raise their right hand, and we're going to try to read through this thing with each other.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky as long as I continue to be a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the police department of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky according to the law. And I do solemnly swear that I am in the Constitution of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons in this state nor out of good, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I accepted or assisted any person thus offending so help me God. Further, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I do possess the qualifications required by the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky as a member of the police department of the City of a fourth class, and that I will not, while I remain a member of the police department, interfere in any election other than to vote. Further, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess my ability to detect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the law against the enemy.
I'd just like to say a few things about Shawn and Matthew before I present them with their badges. Shawn Donlin, as a resident of Fort Thomas, he lives here with his wife and son. And he's a graduate of Highland High School. He comes to us from the Wilder Police Department. He held the rank of sergeant. He was with Wilder for like ten years. He was a firearms instructor, accreditation manager, and a certified PCT and SAVE instructor, along with multiple commendations as a police and member of the US Air Force. Matthew Marksberry, he resides in Orlander with his wife and son. He's a graduate of Norwood High School and a 2007, which I'm a big fan of, NKU All-American baseball player, which is great. He comes to us from Newport Police Department. Matthew was with Newport for five years. He has multiple commendations while at the Newport Police Department, the Governor's DOI Award recipient, SAVE and TASER instructor, and awards for firearms proficiency and physical fitness. We would like to welcome both Shawn and Matthew on board by presenting them with their badges. Shawn will be badge number 4447, and Matthew will be badge number 4448. Congratulations and welcome to the City of Fort Thomas. I'll turn it over to Matthew and Shawn and allow them to do the traditional introducing of their family and say a few words.
Just stick with my immediate family, my wife Kelly and my son Bryce. And we just want to thank the council and the City of Fort Thomas for this opportunity, and it's going to be a pleasure to serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know where to start other than thank you all very much for this opportunity. I look forward to the challenges ahead. I'm honored to meet my wife Amanda and my mother Joan. There are way too many family members and friends and coaches and teachers and mentors and former police officers and FBI agents and my lovely son John Paul is in the back. And one of the reasons I became a police officer is started on my horns being back. So, whoa, how very honored it is here. Thank you.
Senator Schroeder, he wanted to say a few good words about both guys.
Thank you. And I'll keep it brief. I apologize, but I'm going to turn my back to council so I don't talk.
Please do.
I just want to say to the citizens of Fort Thomas, you guys got two great officers. Before I was a state senator, I was assistant Commonwealth attorney. Had the pleasure of working with both these individuals. Just great guys, take their case load seriously. They're just also great people. I was talking to one of the council members recently here saying that as a citizen of Wilder, I'm a little disappointed. Shawn is the type of officer, you know, he'll be just taking your trash out and he stops to see how things are going and just make sure you're having a good day. And working with Amanda, I know he's the same way. Two great guys. You've really picked up two great officers and although he's a Liederman of Wilder, I'm glad he's staying in the city.
I just want to say, welcome to Fort Thomas. And, you know, as a city, we are truly blessed as a wonderful city, a great place to raise a family, and a very safe city. And it's because of the police department and the fire department and everything they do to keep us safe. And I'm grateful that we have two new officers and a new firefighter on duty with us to help keep Fort Thomas safe. So, thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is Bob Heil in the audience somewhere. Bob? Bob? Well, I'm going to read this anyway. I have a proclamation for Bob Heil, for those of you who know Bob. Whereas we have gathered today on this occasion to honor Bob Heil for his dedication and service to the City of Fort Thomas and the community, and whereas Bob has served on the city's planning commission since January 1995, and recently announced that he would be retiring from volunteer service to this commission, and whereas Bob is married to Mary Beth Heil, whom they have had raise five children, Bradley, Luke, Elliot, Emma, and Graham, in the Military Commons subdivision located within Tower Park, and whereas Bob is the president and CEO of KLH Engineers located in Fort Thomas, and whereas Bob has previously served on the cultural district board and continues to serve on the Midway there board, and whereas the city and its residents are going to miss Bob's knowledge and experience on the Fort Thomas Planning Commission, now therefore I, Eric Haas, mayor of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim that October 1st be declared as Bob Heil Day within the City of Fort Thomas, and hereby ask that local citizens honor him and express best wishes and admiration to him on his day. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand this 21st day of September in the year of our Lord 2015. So, if any of you all know Bob Heil, say congratulations to him. He's served on the planning commission for a long time and recently took over as CEO of KLH and needed to step down from the planning commission. And we certainly appreciate all his years of service to the City of Fort Thomas. And I know there are many others, many in this room who have served for Fort Thomas, and we appreciate everything everybody does. So, visitors' communication, at this point, we now open up the floor, the microphone. If anybody would like to address council on any issue, please feel free to come forward, state your name and address, and let us know. If not, if you are welcome to stay for the meeting. If you came here for the pinning and you'd like to get out, you're welcome to do that as well, too. It's totally up to you. You're welcome to stay.
I went to Meyer for two years and Johnson for the rest. Yeah, that's how I...
Big crowd.
You tell. All the time. I will do that. Well, I'm going to tell him tonight. I'll tell him tonight.
Yeah.
He's still in town here.
I'm sure.
Hey, Earl. Be safe.
You too.
That's how he knows. Where he was. Thanks. Thanks for being here. You look good. Go speed living home.
I can, yes. So, now that many people have left, is there anyone left who would like to address council? Yes, Jan? Oh, no, she's sneaking out. Okay. No one would like to address council? Okay, we'll move on with our agenda then. We're down to reports of officers, fire department monthly report. Chief Bailey?
Mayor Haas, I really have nothing else to add, but the report was sent. Obviously, this week is our big week, along with Buckley. We're ready for some music. We are prepared. We'll set some trailers in place on Wednesday and be ready to go, obviously, come Saturday. But looking forward to that event. And business as usual in the fire department. We'd like to ask any questions that council may have, but we didn't have anything to add. One third quarter was in the woodwork, so.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to receive the cloud.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Hi.
Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Meyer?
Hi.
Excellent. Okay, police department report. Chief Bailey?
Mayor Haas and council members, like Chief Bailey, I do not have anything else to pass on from what's already in the August monthly report. Kind of following up with Chief Bailey said, you know, still in that phase of planning for this Saturday, and everything seems to be falling in place. And it'll be a beautiful day, and we'll have some fun. So, it'll be very nice. But other than that, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
And I understand you did talk to some other cities who had the same person at concert and checked with them on how the crowd was and...
We did. Mr. Bowman, you mentioned that at one of the recent council meetings, and actually you sent that email, and we did follow up on that. And I think the biggest thing that they see with the crowds that follow him, obviously, an increase in crowds because of his popularity, and maybe a little bit of more people drinking to where it leads to some fights, things like that. So, you know, that's something we're going to be prepared for with the amount of personnel that we're going to have in place security-wise as far as around the park and down by the stage area, and also, you know, around the guests, obviously, that will be, obviously, singing that night. So, everything will, it should be fine. We're looking good.
Excellent. Great. Any other questions? Entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Hi.
Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Meyer?
Hi.
Excellent, thank you. City administration report. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things that were included in the memo that was forwarded. I'm happy to report that the Safe Route to Schools grant application was finalized actually today, signed off today. We appreciate the help from South Bank. They did a lot of the work with the actual application. We updated all of our numbers. We had submitted previously for that application in 2013. So, we updated all of our engineer reports and other information, and that was actually ready to go, ready to be submitted this week. Couple of other things real quick. Churchill Drive, we did have some questions about the progress on Churchill Drive. That project did have, and the developer had, given notice that they had another project that would fall during the duration of that project. That is completed. They will be on site until this project is finished. The nature of that project, however, is it gets poured and then it has to cure, and then they can drive on that portion. So, there is a weak leg in between each time that they're on the site. So, that should come in under contract. They are continuing work down there, and they'll be there probably in two days to do the next section of that. The remainder of the street program is scheduled to begin October 12th. That will be with the milling being the first process, then the underlayment, and then the actual resurfacing. So, that process will take place over about a two-week period of time. The remaining portion on schedule is, we city crews are currently doing work down there, and we are hopeful to be done by the 5th, which may move it up a week, but we're looking at the 12th more than likely. I had mentioned in here the VA homes. We did have a meeting with the developer on the VA homes. We are still working on the threshold issue of abatement. We feel like there is an opportunity to make some adjustment with the VA, so we're pursuing that. We've tried to fast-track that, if that's possible, working with the VA. But we're hopeful to have a meeting with our developer again in early October, and hopefully we can get past that threshold issue. And in the event that we do, then that project should hopefully move forward in a meaningful way.
Ron, on that note, I interviewed, I did speak with the field reps for Congressman Massey, Senator McConnell, and Senator Paul, and all three of them have expressed a willingness to write a letter on our behalf or help us out in whatever way as far as going to the VA on our behalf. So, let me know if you need any help reaching out to them or getting their contact info.
Absolutely. And where we are, we're dealing with the VA reps. They've expressed a strong interest in being a little more flexible. It may require us to change the memorandum of agreement. However, in the absence of them being able to actually act on that, our next step would be exactly what you're referring to. So, that would be helpful. Thank you. A couple of things I didn't have in the report, just real quickly. The temporary sign regulations and the Reed case is the way it's being referred to. Kevin and I did attend an OKI regional planning forum on Friday. We're working with PDS. They have an outside consultant that they've hired, so we're going to piggyback kind of where they are. Obviously, this is a national issue, and it trickles all the way down to our local zoning. So, we'll continue to kind of follow the lead that we're seeing in the industry with the zoning aspect. And we'll make a report to council for that in the future.
I would say on that, I would consult with Jan anytime you're thinking about enforcing the current regulations as they stand, just to, I guess, inhibit any liability.
Yes. And it really involves temporary signing.
Yes.
So, you know, we don't run into that every day, but noted. Yes. The only other thing, and this is great news, 18 North has some new tenants. I see Debbie's in attendance here. She's worked admirably with our new owner. Dan Gorman is the new owner at 18 North, and they have signed leases with Colonel D. Spurme Spices and Top This, which is the doughnut shop, and Casey Seerly?
Keerly.
Keerly is a photography studio. So, those are all new tenants in the City of Fort Thomas, so that's exciting stuff. And I don't have anything else if anybody had any questions.
Would you mind the sidewalk extension on North Fort Thomas?
Yes.
I talked to your predecessor about this because a couple residents had approached me over the... So, that's a Safe Route to School grant. South Bank Partners helped us develop that grant. Is there any timeframe? Do they have a batching cycle, I'm sure, for when they accept those?
They do. And I asked that question, and I mentioned Henley McIntosh was working with us from South Bank. And I asked, that's the last question I'm asking, when can we hear back?
Right.
And they varied greatly. He said there's occasions where they hear back within a month. He said they did an application with Newport where it took six months, and there was really nothing special about it at all in terms of the application. So, my experience has been within two or three months, you'll hear some notification back from them.
How much help would the grant be in funding it? Is there still a gap?
Well, there's a 20% match that's required with that type of grant. That total project cost is about $745,000. So, the grant application is at about five, almost $100,000. Significant.
Yeah, but important.
Yes.
This has been an area that we've talked about, that at least has come up on my tenure on council, where there's been interest in continuing the sidewalks on Fort Thomas where they stopped at the top. Covert, is that? No.
At Covert, yes.
And there has been some attempts in the past to find funding to do it. And South Bank was very willing to work with us and offered assistance in doing this grant. I feel pretty good about our possibilities this time around, quite honestly, so.
As Councilmember Meyer mentioned, the federal delegation, one of our state delegations was in attendance earlier. Do those come through KDOT? Is that Safe Route to School, likely a federal grant administered through KDOT?
Administered through the state, correct.
And with South Bank, kind of, they're kind of taking the lead on this, that I think we probably have a pretty good shot at hopefully getting it this time around.
They feel pretty confident. So, they've had a lot of success with the grants, and it's nice to have them as a partner, a lead partner.
Sure.
For a lot of those reasons. They see these through and kind of know the process and the point person at the state and so forth.
They're special.
You don't get an opportunity to present it, but certainly when you have the ability to make the contact personally like they have with their other applications, that's helpful.
That sounds great. Would it be, I don't want to be just definite, would it be on the right side of the street as you're going down towards Dayton, and there's utility poles that have to be definite?
There would be, no, it would not affect the utility poles. So, the opposite of that.
But that is it on that one side of the street?
Yes.
You mentioned the 18 North. Debbie, do you have anything that you want to add to what's happening in the city that, since you're here?
We've got several things in the works. We've got several businesses calling asking to come to Fort Thomas, and quite honestly, we don't have enough available space. So, it's an unusual problem. Do you know of anything that might be coming up for sale? Please let me know. It's kind of an exciting time.
That's great.
Part around town, if you'd be a part of that, that was kind of incredible. And we've already got businesses asking to be part of next year, including some vendors coming. And some of those vendors translated into new businesses. So, that's...
So, this past Friday was the last one for this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Very well attended.
Yeah. I missed the last one. I was out of town, but that's exciting. Huge, huge. Excellent. Well, thank you. Okay, we're to new business sanitation programs.
Okay, you have the, kind of, the full scale of what's been submitted by SD1, and it has an outline that kind of gives the background of the program. And in the memo that I forwarded, I tried to break that down even a little further. And really, I guess there's just a couple of points at hand. This program existed previously. Since SD1 originated with ownership of the sanitary sewers, they had a private sewer lateral program. And they had, in their previous program, taken on the entire expense when it came to working with replacing the private laterals within the public right of way. They found that to be, they found that to be difficult to maintain over time from a funding aspect. So, they basically repealed that in 2013. There was a lot of input from communities, individual residents throughout the region with regard to that program. The judge executives were involved. The local jurisdictions through their mayors were involved in the process of kind of revisiting that. In their last budget, they allocated funds to kind of rebirth that program. And really, the significant change in departure from what the previous program was is simply they have requested buy-in from local jurisdictions for the cost associated with replacement of the improvements that belong to that jurisdiction. So, the county, state, or city that's involved would do the restoration specifically of curbs, sidewalks, street repair, surfaces for any of the part that's affected from a repair of a private sewer ladder. In order to do that, they have a memorandum of agreement that they're asking for signature, and it would require the city basically confirming their participation in the program. The other aspect of that, we've had conversations with the district representatives, is coordinating that. And we feel comfortable that that process would not be something that would be too cumbersome for the city. We would envision our public works crews doing that restoration, not unlike what we do with our street programs now. We also did research on our street permit applications, and we have found that in recent history, we're probably talking about maybe three a year is what we're talking about in terms of our participation. It doesn't seem like a lot, but for the individual property owner that has to make the repair, you're talking about several thousands of dollars. you're talking about several thousands of dollars when they get underneath a public right-of-way. With working with the depth typically, with the utility conflicts, and then the restoration costs, it becomes a pretty significant project for an individual property owner. I did make note in there that we do not, obviously, have the same burden as some communities, specifically in an area like Covington or Newport. Probably 90 or more percent of those residential structures have sewer taps that are under public improvements. In a city like Fort Thomas, it's a much smaller percentage because a lot of ours go to the valleys behind the homes and the taps are not in the public right-of-way. So, it would not affect everybody, but it does, we do have an aging infrastructure. When it occurs, it's an obvious expense, so staff's recommending that we authorize signature to be a part of that program. There's a number of communities that have already signed on. Covington, that I made reference to, apparently has 275-plus queued into the system. There is a specific allocation, so it's only funded until that's completed in an annual budget. So, if we're going to participate, we're, we know of two cases in Fort Thomas where people were actually awaiting our participation. So, it would require us signing on into the program and that's what staff's recommending.
Do you need any action on this?
I think council would need to vote to authorize the mayor's signature, I guess.
I'll entertain that motion if anybody would like to make it.
I just want to say, there is a termination clause in here that are the agreement and that was one of my concerns is if we're on the hook and it, and we see it escalate with our aging infrastructure, how much are we going to be on the hook for? But I did see we can opt out within 30 days, so I don't know if any of you guys had that concern. That was what I found and that was correct.
I attended a number of meetings about this whole issue and it truly does affect the river cities more than it affects us. That was the biggest hurdle that the cities faced when this program stopped a few years ago because, and that's where all, I know Jan's preschool building down there, we had to replace the sewer line, entire building and out to the street and it was a pretty expensive proposition to do all that because it was so old and luckily, most of the infrastructure up here is a little bit newer and like Ron said, a lot of it's going to the backyard, so I don't see it's going to affect us very much at all.
I don't see it being much of a risk, but if there is, you know, we might go to the cabinet or something and opt out and renegotiate it, so.
And if it does get to that point, like then SD1's probably going to try to opt out or figure out another way to deal with it.
I move that we authorize the mayor's signature into the agreement.
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay. Finance, any other new business? Finance Committee report on dispersments.
Report of dispersment, September 8th to September 21st, 2015. General Fund, $99,137.73. Public Works KDOT Fund, $131,368.10. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CPB Revitalization, $12,496.12. Total, $244,142.73. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 300780 through 300860 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member.
Entertain a motion.
Move to confirm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
All right, we are down to ordinance resolutions and orders. Ordinance O-18, 2015.
This is a summary of ordinance number O-18, 2015, an ordinance providing for the imposition, levy collection, and apportionment of the taxes of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky for the year 2015 and fixing the tax rate. For 2015, there is imposed as taxes of the city the sum of .390 upon each $100 valuation of the real property and .390 upon each $100 valuation of personal property and mixed property and .3971 upon each $100 valuation of motor vehicles subject to taxation within the city limits and .390 upon each $100 valuation of all franchise valuations to be used for defraying the current and incidental expenses of city government. Tax bills shall include the year, owner, description of the property, rate of taxation, and amount due. The taxes shall be due and payable at the city building on the date the ordinance becomes effective. All bills not paid or postmarked by October 31st shall be delinquent. Upon each unpaid tax bill, a penalty of 5% of the amount of the total bill shall be added. The city treasurer shall collect the bills and with 7% penalty added and interest at the rate of 8% per annum until paid on the amount of the tax and waste fee. The city treasurer shall make a full and complete report in January 2016. The city clerk shall add an additional penalty of 10% of the amount of the total bill. The city treasurer shall then proceed to collect the bills with a total penalty of 15% and interest from November 1st, 2015. The treasurer shall deposit them in the general fund of the city. In the event that a delinquent tax bill is referred to the city attorney for collection, legal action will be initiated with, to collection, to collect the delinquent tax interest penalty levied thereof and the cost associated with collection. The city of Fort Thomas has a lien upon the property assessed for the tax and waste fees and all penalties, interest fees, commission charges, and other expenses, including court costs and attorney fees. The summary was prepared by Jan Sidenfaden, city attorney for the city of Fort Thomas.
I'll entertain a motion.
I wouldn't mind having a quick discussion since I wasn't able to attend last week. If that's okay?
Sure, we can get a motion in a second and then discussion.
Motion to discuss?
Motion to approve. Well, we can discuss, I don't care.
What is, no, I mean, I don't know, what is it?
Normally, procedure is you move to, we would have a motion in a second and then have discussion.
Okay.
That's the normal procedure.
All right, I'll do the normal procedure.
Okay.
Move to brief.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
All right. Sorry, I'm not up on my Robert's Rules of Order.
That's all right.
So, yeah, I didn't get to attend last week, so I do appreciate you guys reading the memo and I understand you guys did discuss it and so I very much appreciate that. Just because I wasn't involved, I wanted to kind of talk about where, kind of why I came to that, proposing an alternate rate of .383. But I consulted some resources from the Government Finance Officers Association and when considering a reserve target, what they recommended was two outside standards. One was the GFOA's Best Practices, which is Government Finance Officers Association, and then also rating guidelines like S&amp;P, or Standard and Poor's, S&amp;P. The GFOA recommended, regardless of size, maintaining unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of no less than two months, which is 16%, and we're right around 15%, 16% of regular funding, operating revenues, or regular general fund operating expenditures. And then S&amp;P, who rates the bonds, obviously, they consider a reserve of between 1 and 4% of revenues to be adequate and reserves above 15% very strong. So, I feel like over the last 12 years, we've raised the property taxes around, I guess, around 32%, so almost a full percentage increase and we've gotten a lot out of that, so we've been able to build our reserve to that point and we've also been able to, you know, update our parks, update our streetscapes and our business districts and so we've seen a lot of return on that investment, but I feel like there's nothing that, I don't feel like we need a budget, and we've talked about this before, budget to add to the reserves because we're at the point now where we can, I think, continue to add to those reserves by coming under budget with, you know, prudent management and we do have an adequate reserve and for some reason we do not, if we're not able to do that. So, so that's why I was proposing the alternate rate. I, again, I appreciate at least having a discussion and I, you know, if others disagree, that's fine, but that's, that's why I would not support the full compost score.
And we did have some good discussion last week and what I would, what I would like to do is next year, when we start the budgeting process, make sure everybody in council knows about the, about the meetings and so that everybody interested can attend, so that we can look at it from the, we almost, at this point, I think we need to move ahead where we are, but start with the budgeting process and I want to re-educate myself on the difference between, because I started on the Finance Committee under the old rules and those rules changed during the process. And I want to get myself back up to speed on what those differences are because of how they allocate, you know, streets and sewers and everything else has a value to it. Make sure we get clarified on that and then if we need to budget amounts for emergency expenditures where we're not doing that now or if we are doing that now, make adjustments to that, but look at it through the whole process and absolutely, we can then look at that and see how we go and get more input on it.
That would be my hope, too, to have a much more inclusive discussion and more in advance of the action.
Yeah.
I would appreciate that as well.
Sure, sure. That's not a problem, yeah.
I would need your input.
And like I said, my, my tenure on it, when they made the change from the old accounting method to the new accounting method, it took a couple of years to do that and quite honestly, it was extremely confusing because they went from a method that worked for cities to more business-like method, which I appreciated because I understood that a little bit better, but then you started allocating things that didn't make sense for a city to do and so it got, it got fairly confusing, so. But absolutely, I think we should. Any other comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Okay. Executive Order E-007, 2015. Oh, we already kind of did this, but I guess it's kind of after, technically it's after the fact.
Executive Order E-07, 2015. An executive order appointing Matthew Marks Berry to the Office of Police Officer for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and fixing his compensation for the fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Excellent. And it doesn't require any action. Executive Order E-008, 2015.
Executive Order E-08, 2015. An executive order appointing Sean Donaldin to the Office of Police Officer for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and fixing his compensation for the fiscal year.
All right. Okay, I will attend, how, how do we have to say this now? In accordance with KRS 61.81C for the discussion of proposed pending litigation against, on behalf of the city, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that right?
We should specifically say that it's for pending litigation involving Joe Short and Deborah Everhart. We should name the litigation in the motion.
Well, I didn't know that.
I'm just telling you now.
Okay, cool. All right, so what she said.
Say it again? We have to, we have to clarify who, what the litigation is.
Pending litigation with the names.
The two names that she just...
Yeah, so you have to say that, right?
What was the first?
Give us the names.
It's a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, pending or threatened litigation involving Joe Short or Deborah Everhart.
Okay, and did we get a second on that?
Second.
I move in two seconds.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Thank you. We will be going into executive session, then we will come back in to adjourn the meeting. There'll be no other business to come before council.
There may, there may be a motion when we come back in.
I lied. There may be a motion when we come back in, so you're welcome to hang around and see what that motion might be.